They're drawing students away from us, so yeah.
I was just gonna, I mean, I, um. My, the welcome center project seems to have a lot of merit, especially given the modest cost to it. I was probably more curious than just the deferred maintenance. So if you made a comment, Quinn, that, um. The four-year schools have all or many of them have partnered with SUNY to kind of look at deferred maintenance, but none of the community colleges have. Why is that?
Believe because the, with the four years, they're not sponsored, you know, that SUNY pretty much funds them. So SUNY would want that data to prove that. You know, they actually have a need, whereas they're probably more dependent for community colleges on their sponsor. So, you know, SUNY won't give us money unless they know that you all support us and will give us money for it. So there's a. They're probably, you know, like, again, I'm trying to get in their head, but well, if the county thinks it's okay. Then it must be okay to pay him, or if the county's not giving them money for it, why would we give them money for it? So there's a. I think now they're realizing that having that. Having that data from all of their partners is actually valuable and they can, they can, I mean, they can track so many things through the AIM software that they use. We already, they want us to use it for our work order system, but we use a different one. Uh, we do track all of our, uh. Our actual usage and send it to them. Like they know every square foot of our campus and how we use it, who, who pays for what and. So to, to be able to incorporate that and then track. You know, well, what is the, is, is building five depreciating, you know, if, if, if they do a renovation or recommend a renovation of building five is actually worth it, you know, does it? Or what it costs, would be better to tear it down, you know. So for them to have that data. Um, would be a huge boon for them. I don't know why they haven't done it. With other, uh, like officially with other community colleges, we reached out to them to see if, uh. Like what offerings they had or what kind of support they could provide. And they said, hey, if you're interested, we really want you. So they, I think they were looking for a partner. We just happened to call and be the, the first ones in, so. Um, you know, it's a win for us to be the, you know, the pioneer, so to speak, for community colleges.
So potentially would that gain traction quick enough that the twenty twenty-five CIP that we hear about a year from now might include. Request for a good chunk of the.
It, it, it could, if they, even if they don't move, uh. That fast, I'm sure we'll have enough data to start. Putting, putting things in. There's things that we know we want to do, um, already, you know, we want to upgrade our, our building management system for the campus. Uh, all of our control systems, left control and things like that, uh. We have, uh, well, we talked about laundry compliance plan. We have a number of roofs that still need work, um, so. We can do it. I would, I would love to come to you and say. Here is, we know everything you need to do and here is our plan. Here's our plan for next year. Here's our plan for, you know, year two, year, and. Because it has real data behind it and it's not, I mean, we, we know what we need to fix. You know, I could sit here and like I said, I could rattle off a list of things we need to do, but I would love to have SUNY's data behind it. And it's, it's valid. They've, they've checked that, you know, they have hard numbers or, you know, I guess they're not hard because they're all still conceptual estimates, but we have real estimates behind it. Um, that's, that's what I want to bring to you and I don't, I can't say for sure because we're on SUNY timeline that will have it for next year. Um, but when we have it, yes, we will see a, you know, a, a, a change here. And again, we, I know we're not going to get it. You know, sixty million or eighty million over six years. That's a, that's a big ask. Um. But if we can show that if we don't do, if we don't replace the, the cooling tower or the, the chillers on building two. You know, we're, we're going to lose, you know, those things are going to fail and then we're going to lose coin to the campus. So we need to replace those by twenty twenty-seven. Like I'd rather tell you that story. Than to just keep asking for, for money and you're like, well, where, where are you going to put it? Where are you going to spend it?
You know, like deferred for so long, right?
Exactly. And that's the challenge. We deferred for very.
This, the phase three project, how many of, of the twenty twenty-one study, I imagine they have priorities. In groups, right? Priority one, two, three, or whatever, high medium all, um.
Yeah, they, they're all high, very high. Yeah, but it's, it's, it's really lumped together and it's, it's not as, um. It's not as robust as I would like it to be, um, but that, that's just me. It's. But it, but it is, but it's good. It gives us a, you know, a rough overview, but it, it doesn't say you have to do, uh. You know, the, uh, the, the. The chillers or the, and, and the, at the downtown campus. That's the other part. It's the downtown campus. We love it. It's great. It's a new renovation, but it's an old building. So there's things there that are, you know, we're starting to see that we really need to get working on. So we don't. You know, lose that value like the boilers.
And the twenty twenty-one study included.
It, it didn't include both, yes. We, I didn't include, uh, the ATC numbers. In, in that, that slide because it's really relevant.
So how, I, I imagine there's a high priority list. How, how much of the, of this, um. Phase three project is covering the high priority list of the twenty twenty-one study.
Understood. So we already have some projects that are planned with the money that's already in, uh, property process phase three and those are. I'll say, uh, some of the things that were more urgent, like the downtown, uh, garage is already in there that we're dealing with, uh, the, uh. Uh, building thirty-three roof is being done right now for downtown. That roof needed to be done. It was creating issues for the forward center that we just built, so. We're working on the building twelve roof that needs to be replaced a few years ago that we had to pause or postpone until now, so. So we're, we're hitting some of those, those, uh, high priority items already. Those are, those are in here. Uh, there's things, the, the one that sticks out to me the most is the building management system, which is kind of. Uh, it's hung on for so long because we've been able to keep it running, but when that goes, we have a. So we really need to get that into the CIP and that's not in, in here right now.
And that's in the, oh, the manic system, is it?
It's, it's, uh, it's an, it's the old, it's an older version of this, uh, semen system. Uh, I forget which, I think it's the apogee with that version of it. And even though Siemens, Siemens did an upgrade, they end to life the system and didn't really give us a warning that they were end to life in it. And their new system isn't, it doesn't play well with others. Like we haven't gotten the best, uh, feedback. We've checked in with our, um. With our peers, other colleges and some that have upgraded to it and aren't loving it, some, uh, I don't speak. I'm sure it works well for others, but, um. For our needs, we'd probably go with something else, just doing an upgrade to them, even though we are checking those numbers and we're going to check it and see if we can work with it.
County have a standard, um. Control systems, or something that we may check with.
Yeah, oh, yes.
So the, um, I just, just for board members and later on, uh, the items that Quinn presented, they, right, and six. And forty-four on the priority list. Um, any other questions from board members? Right. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's actually coming in. Nice job. Next up is, uh, presentation from the urban transportation and we have Tom Bob during.
Everybody.
Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, so we don't necessarily have a PowerPoint like MCC did, but I'm certainly welcome to. Uh, go through our projects. I'll just start out by saying. If you're all familiar with the Department of Transportation, our six-year capital program is usually pretty consistent. Obviously, we. Work on roads and bridges. And if you look at our annual funding. Mostly consisting, it's a little bit front loaded in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. And the reason for that is because we were just awarded some federal funding. This past year, uh, for this highway for in maintenance eleven and highway prevent maintenance twelve projects. Got a good amount of federal funding there. Uh, and then if you go to our traffic engineering. Section, uh, we have a traffic signal system and replacements group one project that was also awarded. Also Taylor Road Bridge as well, was I believe originally a county funded project that we received federal. Funding for, a little bit front loaded, uh. Dave Kubiak was going to give a presentation on our East River Road project unless anybody had any questions up front and we can certainly answer. Uh, general questions after that.
It's any questions then? From board members and that Dave can. Dave, you're on.
Sure. Yeah, I got some more hard copies back here. Does anyone want to copy the Easter stuff or I can just kind of run through it real quick? It's just one of many of our projects, Tom, that our CIP project. Um, currently designed right now. That's the one. Yep, yep, right here. Um. Eastern Road, town of. Our products are born for different reasons. The DOT, this one was a combination of pavement condition, signal condition, and also the developments going on East River Road. Uh, tons and tons of development, residential, commercial, industrial, different things going on. We had a study a few years back, we actually kind of projected out if all of these parcels do get developed, what kind of traffic impacts would be, we'd be looking at on this corridor. We actually partnered up at that time with the town, Panera, as these developments come through, the town is actually collecting money. Uh, to work towards this project and secure mitigation fees. They actually cover a portion of the actual project used to design, um. Design, construct turning lanes, uh, some traffic signals, things that are beneficial to the corridor and the, uh, individual, um, developments as well, so. Uh, in terms of existing out there right now, it's just two eleven-foot lanes for the majority. Shoulder was there from one and a half to six feet. Uh, got forty mile an hour posted speed limit, our speed limit, our speed data from two years ago, so about forty-four for the average, uh, fifty-two for the eighty-fifth. Um, all the signalized intersections currently operate at level service D or better. Uh. Basically means, I think I had, sorry, aside, the next slide actually shows a little bit of the level of service stuff too. Um. In terms of one of B actually means ten to twenty seconds of delay in each one. We don't want to be seeing people getting there and that app, which is over eighty seconds. Get delayed, you get congestion, you get exit. So, um, in terms of crash history, we had a hundred and eight crashes in a three-year period. Um, injuries on twenty-one of those, no fatal, thankfully. Uh. Nice, super, super cluster, some rear end accidents here and there, things we try to work on again, and some of those current lanes tends to help. I'm in the signal as best we can do as well, so. Uh, overall objectives, the job, correcting the pavement deficiencies, extending the life of the pavement. Uh, improving the drainage, correcting any safety or geometric, um, including the. Older width, can I mention we're doing the one and a half to sixes existing. Once we go through the job, we're going to have six foot consistently, uh, for use by, use by bikes and pets. Um. Reconstructing some of the intersections. Yeah, and expanding for future development, uh, maintenance existing culvers extending the service life there. Um. We're basically looking for a minimum of level of service D in the designer, which is twenty years from now, assuming we have all that development. Want to make sure we still have an acceptable level of service at those signals. We're not causing, uh, major debt, they, backups are delayed, sorry. We're going to add, add and improve some, uh, pedestrian and bike accommodations also. Um, so the next slide kind of show our proposed improvements, just the typical section. This would be really just for a two-lane section, which is a good chunk of the road. We got other sections, we're going to have right turn lanes, left turn lanes. Uh, we have two-way left turn lanes for courses where we got a lot of driveways. Um, parts of the road, we're going to be doing a single course mill and resurface. Other areas, we're going to be doing a deeper mill. We'll actually pave two courses of asphalt over top of it based on condition. Can't improve some of the closed drainage. The other thing that we added in on the job too was, um, the town had plans to do an, uh, eight, eight-foot wide mixed-use trail. On the east side of East River Road from RIT, um, down just, just north of Lehigh Station Road. It's actually going to get rolled into the project as well. Now, uh, we're going to share in some funnier that, uh, the majority of it's coming right from the town, so. Um.
Is that because of all the town home type, you know, student facility staying? A lot of students stay on that, yeah, west side in particular.
Yeah, we've had issues, I mean, forever years back, they had issues with pets walking where there's no shoulders, things like that. So the off, it's an actually off, um. Off roadway trail, you know, I think there's a five-foot separation between the edge of the shoulder and the trail, so it's right, the nice, nice, uh. Opportunity for them to get out, so. Um, so again, starting at the next couple of sites, just go through the road. I mean, I can go in as much detail as you guys want. I don't want to spend too much time on it, but, uh. You know, we're at the throughway, then you get to Farrell Road, we added a left turn lane at Farrell Road, uh, to track some rear end accidents, uh, give people opportunity to bypass, make safe lefts. Uh, Brooks Road is a pretty major intersection and that one, we're actually adding a right turn lane on Brooks Avenue, or not Brooks Avenue, sorry, Brooks Road. Um, six-foot wide shoulders going in there too. Get down to Riverwood, that's one of the developments there. Uh, Riverwood Tech that kind of, uh, is opposite to Lehigh Station Road intersection. They currently have two entrances. The one is just north of Lehigh Station, then they have one on the south here. South one's currently signaledized, that signal's going to take it out of the project. We're actually going to move their main entrance to, um, right across from Lehigh Station Road and they'll share that signal there instead, so. They'll still have a in and out opportunity here. And then if you go to the Lehigh Station, that, uh, fourth leg is going to get added right to Lehigh. And their entrance that used to be just north of Lehigh will go away too. So again, that helps with safety, not so much, um. Eliminate some of the movements there too between the two intersections, so. It provides that signalized opportunity, so. Uh.
I've always wondered why that wasn't aligned.
Not sure. Yeah, I think that was Kodak many, many years ago and it seemed like a nice opportunity to line it up and, you know, we got pretty good geometry again. Uh, you set aside too, Barton, Barton Lowdutus is our design engineer, they've been doing most of the work. Um, in terms of doing that layout and stuff, and they've been heavily involved with the town over the years on their development, um, on a lot of their projects, so. Uh, the United Station, Eagleview Drive and Fairwood, um. Yeah, not a lot there, just adding some shoring lanes there.
There's been a lot of construction on East River Road and there has been a lot of actions. Did you say one forty? A hundred and eight accidents and forty-four injuries?
Uh, I think it was twenty-one injuries, I want to say. Can't remember what I had on there. I, we had a hundred and eight crashes and twenty-one injuries.
Okay. Yeah, that road does need a lot of help, um, so I'm glad to see this project's. Going to, going to do that Wagner Road and make more turning lanes, make it safer.
We could be a great opportunity. Some areas are limited site distance wise, you know, providing these opportunities for people to safely. Sit while they're waiting to turn left is a big, big benefit, so.
Right.
Uh, especially with all the development coming up too, you know, we're going to see more and more traffic out there and, uh. College and everything, so.
Right.
There's been fatalities from pedestrians.
Yes, I remember seeing in the news, I, I can't remember how recently, but again, the, the mixed-use trail and the, even the shoulders tried a little bit better because you get a lot of. Unfamiliar, um, people in the area too, you know, coming from college and not really know where to go or what to do and. Want to keep them a safe opportunity, so.
Yeah. Plus it's very hilly in some of those areas too.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh.
And it is a popular bike room, cycling room, so. Trying to find it on the, I don't know where it was on the. In the priorities list, I didn't, I didn't look for it. Forty-three.
One question regarding the, um, eight-foot wide trail. It doesn't run the whole distance, correct?
It does not, actually. It's, it's kind of poorly showed up here on this print, I apologize. Right at the Eagleview Drive and Fairwood Drive intersection is where it actually starts. Um, start right opposite Eagleview and then run it up towards, um, towards RIT there. It actually is, it ended up going behind one of the developments, the developers building the first portion of it along with theirs and then we're going to pick it up, um. Just the north here, so, but yeah, it's not the entire project.
Are you doing six-foot wide shoulders in that section as well?
We're doing six-foot wide shoulders in addition to the eight-foot trail there, yes.
Just going to mention, we're also going to be installing pedestrian signals at all the existing traffic signals that overlap, but it's true.
Um, another question about the trail, is the town going to pay hundred percent of the cost of the trail?
The town is paying, I think the, basically a hundred percent, yes, under the project. We wanted to lump everything in, instead of them go out. They wanted to do it, I think, this year, then I got pushed to next year. Instead of them going out separate from us, we'll have our character, all that work. Then work through, uh, intermunicipal agreement with the town to cover those costs, so.
The county help with the design?
Uh, they did the design too. We just implemented their CAD files into our project. So we had a little bit of tweaking because we had widened and added some turn lanes. So we did have to adjust a few things, but it was pretty minor for the most part. They went out, acquired all the right away for us. Made the payments, did the maps, all that stuff and kind of presented us with the, what I call a ninety-five percent design for that trail, so.
And it's very big benefit for us because the getting right away on these projects can prove to be tough. A lot of time.
Very challenging, so we were very fortunate they did it. We still have to get some for some other things on our project, but at least the trail portion. Um, they really worked good. They got good working relations with college and other areas too, so. Um, so Eagleview, the trail starts, um, comes up to the north, uh. You see it Lynn Home, that's when the trail actually kind of comes back and starts to parallel the road again. Some of that, I think it's going around that cemetery. Actually, we didn't have any room to squeeze that trail in there, so. Um, that's where you kind of see that, that little gag there. Uh, the way we went through Lucius Gordon Bailey Road. Uh, we got a couple of spot full-depth improvements, just where we see pavement, um. Kind of deteriorating, got new traffic signals throughout, new masked arm signals, new pad signals where necessary. We're going to be using a lot of the, um, video camera detection instead of the old traffic loops that actually got cut in the pavement. Works really well. We can detect bikes, we can detect pad, count traffic, a lot of really neat improvements that they're doing, so it's, uh, should be kind of a nice, uh. Nice improvement out here for sure, so. Little less maintenance too. We don't see, you know, when you get RGD or the water authority always making road cuts, we're constantly seeing those get, and then every. Ten years or so, we're milling them up ourselves too, so, uh. You know, some of the equipment, uh, stays in place, you know, one, we blow out one camera to three hundred and sixty camera. Attack, um, every single leg of the intersection. We can also use as a live traffic camera, see if there's any incidents, any backups and kind of make adjustments on the fly, so.
And they, they all report back to.
The traffic operations center though, yep. River Meadow and Firedome, gets into RIT there, we're in a right turn lane there. For capacity, new traffic signals. Uh, this section, we're down to just a two-inch military, military surface, just based on the pavement condition, the, the history. And then lead up to Ward Road, which again is just south of Jefferson. Um, that's pretty much the other project there, so. Hopefully it rushed during, I apologize, started to talk fast at times, but there was a lot to cover. It's a pretty long job for us. Um, a lot going on, but again, we're finishing up design this year. We just got the sixty percent plan from the consultant. Open to go out to bid this fall. There'll actually be a two-year construction, uh, phase, so next year, the following, so.
Have there been any discussions with RIT? Um, there's, I noticed sometimes. Roadways around there, we're kind of missing a turn lane, someone, you know, everyone. Wants to go to that entrance over there rather than this entrance, the one you think that they want to go to, the students go to that one.
Well, I, I know, I, I came from state DOT a couple of years ago and they actually run the signal at Jefferson and East Henry out of there, or East River Road, rather. We had a lot of issues there. We did do some re-timing, tough intersection. The main thing was intersection just, uh, on Jefferson, just, uh, east of there. Way under capacity. There's much more opportunity to go, but everyone wants to go down East River for some reason, you know, so it's, it's interesting, yeah.
First entrance there, no one uses.
Right, least resistance, even if it's that, you know, whatever, quarter mile longer potentially, but, you know, we'll cut, we'll keep monitoring that as, as I said, and, uh. Maybe it's a, a wayfinding sign or something where we actually direct people to go straight and then make that right, so.
It's all based on the web building they're going to.
Yep, yep.
Has there been any talk about widening the mouth of East River Road near Jefferson and making two turning lanes there? Any talk of that? Through either DOT or anywhere else?
So, that's actually state DOT intersection there. Our project stops south of that, um. You kind of push them a little bit to consider those types of things, but, um. It's not part of this particular project, then it'd be something that they would have to take out on their end, so.
Okay.
I agree it would help, and I think we, again, when I came from state DOT before, we looked into that too. You know, a lot of people go on East River, making a left on Jefferson. The thought was that a lot of them stay on Jefferson. What we found is a majority actually. Take it right on, on Scottsville Road and that way too, so even a dual left on East River to Jefferson might be beneficial.
Right.
Some talk of it, I didn't know if you knew anything more about it.
Yeah, they're all heading to three ninety.
Yep, yep. The thought was always, oh, fifty percent go here and really we saw it's really more like that eighty to eighty percent plus or really kind of go down Scottsville Road, so.
Is there any relevance to the fact the state is probably going to add a fairly significant amount of chips funding? To any of the out-year project, projects you've got in the CIP?
Well, I'll cover that, so. Be doing a small chips project this year between the Northern Limited, this project and that Jefferson Road, that little section, uh, between that got left out. So that's an example where we're using chips funding, but kind of at a more broad scale. And permanent transportation, right now we get about ten million dollars a year in state chips funding. Uh, which is money directly from the state DOT to the county. That we can use as we see fit, and it's not for these types of projects necessarily in here. Uh, in this capital program, this is operating funds. So we really, our motto is we try to do the right treatment at the right time and. Some of our treatments last six, seven years. If we mill and resurface, might last ten to twelve years. Uh, so our goal is really to get the most out of our money as possible, obviously. So the more chips funding we get in the future, certainly the, the more we can do, the more shoulders we can add, widen roads, things like that. So I don't know if that directly answered your question, uh, but chips is a little bit separate from the, the capital program.
Then tie into the question that, um. Byrenhart had last meeting, right, with previous man from, for DOT, like there was. She was asking about, um, how many. Roads are going to be prepped for, um, active transportation wider.
Oh. Probably not, really.
Yeah, it could be similar, uh, so the, the difference between a chips project is where whatever is out there, we're basically replacing that. So typically, we're not widening road. Occasionally we might add some shoulders, but it's not like an in-depth capital project like the ones you see in this book where we're replacing all the drainage, the widening. Out shoulders at a, at a wide scale.
Okay, that's what we.
Yeah.
Yes, chips are all considered maintenance.
Maintenance type projects.
Sure. Again. Anyone online with some more questions, Rob? You good?
I'm good.
Andre. You all set? Snow is good, so, all right. Um, well, thank you for the presentation. All right, next up, up on the agenda, um, you have, George, you have half an hour, right? Less, a little less.
Yeah, about a half an hour, okay.
Next up is the vote to, uh, let's see, recommend the proposed twenty twenty-four. Through twenty twenty-nine capital improvement program to the county executive and. They do need a motion for that, please, but. There are second.
Okay.
You're Richard. Mike Carroll. Is there discussion of the? Any other questions?
I don't have questions, but I, I do want it in the minutes that I am concerned with the fact that we've got a number of projects coming up in the next couple of years. That haven't been repriced, repriced back in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. We know that they're not accurate numbers and at least I feel they're not accurate numbers. Administration's bringing us. Add-ons every month to, to the referral packages and, um. I have expressed an interest in having that redone. I don't believe that's happened. So, I don't believe this represents a true cost. Of planned projects and we're either going to raise taxes or do less.
Is the, just, uh, just going around the room here, the proper lies, has, has everyone updated their prices for the current? Bidding environment? Is that what this, uh, I know it's been discussed numerous times.
No, I asked last month, it was not, so that's why I just made the comments.
Yeah. If I.
Well, the capital improvement program is meant to be a planning program specifically, not a budgeting program. So there's a difference in how we perceive the numbers in the out-years. Um, so although they may not be updated for, uh, what was bid in twenty-seven or what was designed in twenty seventeen, twenty nineteen. That are more core current years, when they go out to bid, the numbers are updated before that happens. So they do have an understanding of those increased numbers. But in the out-years, of course, that's purely a planning document. It is a, a framework for how we move forward. So those numbers aren't updated on the fly each year. That would be.
How can you plan? If you, if you know that you're not going to have the amount of money. I mean, we've seen, I don't know, Bob, you know, thirty, fifty percent increases on many of these projects and referrals have come through, that sound about right?
Think there have been a number of referrals with significant increases and referrals with minor increases. I think you've seen the whole gamut, right?
So, I just. I don't think it's a real plan.
Well, I, I, if I can add something, one, the. The capital, the DOT capital program, every year with the bridges to highway, we do. And have in the. In the last two years. Increase things even moving farther out. It might, you know, it's a planning tool, but we recognize the way our, our bids have been trending. That it would be wise to increase those costs by some amount.
So you have, you have adjusted the numbers.
Yeah, and, and.
That you submit.
Well, that's, that's one department.
Yeah, you have to because, um. We don't want to be coming back and, you know, saying, we, we need that more money. Now this year. Be, because of oil prices fluctuating. We didn't have to, and that was something we could not have seen a year ago, but we have increased those estimates. All the way out by some amount.
Now, you used the example last week, right, of the Westfall Road, where we included escalation, but again, it's it's three to four percent escalation. Over time, we don't take into account the big.
Understood, I'm just saying, we now know. In the last couple of years, I mean, if you continue to compound at six percent, the latest lowest number we've seen in a while, annual growth. Over five years, you're getting up in the forty-five percent, forty, forty-five percent range. Of increase and. That's not something I think we should be overlooking, but I think we are.
I think that's a point for the group to keep in mind, I I would suggest, however. Even though inflation has run rampant since over nineteen. The Fed. Committee still has a goal of using monetary and other fiscal policy tools to bring inflation to their target two percent range. The speed that they can do that is uh out of our control. And there is concern that that would even lead to a recession, recession is anti-inflation. Uh, where prices in theory would come down. Um, I did look back several years. Um, there are project increases that come to the full legislature in this body every year. Um, in calendar year twenty twenty-two, we uh submitted twelve increases to the county legislature totaling thirty. Three point seven million dollars. The year before in twenty-one, there were eight increases, twenty-seven point seven million. Uh, the year before, six increases, twenty nineteen, there were thirteen increases, twenty eighteen, there were fourteen increases, and twenty seventeen. There were five increases, we also go to legislature to add projects. Um. Different, different projects and different years, we've had. Uh, several years, we we've added six projects, we've had a year where we added fourteen. And in twenty twenty-two, we added fifteen of varying dollar amounts. Um, from very low to very, very, very high. Um. I. A Pat phrased it, it's not a budget document, it's more of a planning document. Um, and. I do know the county has worked pretty hard over the past. Quite, quite a long time to monitor the um. Outstanding bonds that the county has. Um, manage the annual debt service that are bonding. Uh, impacts the annual budget. Um, and it's been pretty consistent. Um, this, this particular proposed CIP, um, you will see debt services increasing. Um, it goes over the sixty million dollar threshold that. We in finance like to stay within. And you've also seen in this proposed CIP and as demonstrated in some of the presentations, what we do about it. Um, MCC, we've discussed two projects that were pushed out by uh two years. Um, we did not discuss it, but in DOT, there were. Five road projects that were pushed out one year. Um, we didn't discuss it, and it wasn't in the CIP, but Mike Garland knows very well. Um, some of our building and facilities projects. Either are severely reduced or pushed out. So it is, it is a balancing act. Um, it is a planning tool, I I have to a- agree. Uh, to to a certain extent, however, um, we have a big jail project that's not included in the CIP, and. You know, the county's going to have to think hard about. Um, who we're going to strong-arm into paying for that. I pretend it's strong-arm, who we're gonna beg? But yeah, yeah, so it is something that this board, this planning board and the full legislature really needs to pay close attention to. Um. But I guess there are tools that we have employed to manage it, and and again. I I'm not going to believe with this, but Pat Gooch really. Said it well, it's a planning tool, not a, not a budget tool.
Not denigrating, or I don't mean to imply anybody here or anybody in any of our departments isn't doing their job or has done a poor job. It's just something that I think we can do a better job on. Because, well, I'm not going to be here next year, because I'm done in the legislature. Somebody's going to be here, and they're going to have things either pushing right. Going up in taxes, or. You know, whatever Magic Bob is able to work to keep him on schedule, um. And anyway, it it is a planning document, I just think it could be a stronger planning document with some extra.
This is.
Like that I've knocked anybody's work here, that's not the intent of those comments at all.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, now, this is uh Andre Evans. In my former life as a um financial advisor, I've always used the uh. Uh, he, even though the, before COVID, it was a two percent. Uh, you know, we've pretty much kept to a two percent inflation rate. Always, uh, four is the, is the average, but what was used is six to. Eight percent inflation rate for any future planning. Is it the board's responsibility, or can the board? Set a, since we have historical data, what the increases are year over year, can the board? Um. Let uh recommend or to legislators to set a, a universal planning. Um. Increase or at all, or factor. Uh, for for any future projects? Or is that outside of our purview?
Good question, I think. Yeah, I I don't know if the legislature would. Set an edict for that, but um. If, if we, we have been asking. The departments when they come in, what, what kind of, you know, what kind of escalation that. That they've been carrying, and and all of them have come back and said, you know what, we've, we've been bumping that up, um. So, I think, um. I don't know, it's, it's like Bob says, it's a good, it's all of us here, probably. Good to go back in this next planning process um to look at that.
Yeah, because, because we have, we have thirty years or or more of data. Uh, that takes into account every financial cycle that could possibly exist, to include now a pandemic. Um, so we should be able to. Safely predict. Uh, what future increases there there should be, which is fair to the taxpayer as opposed to winging it with with uh. Uh, with the political and non-implications of tax increases or or tax burdens. Uh, that are unfairly levied, or projects that are needed but not being done. Because we didn't plan properly uh to see the future. You know, not that the past is the future, but we can use the past to, to relatively predict what the future should be.
Yeah, I think, um, and and I think the various departments reach out to each other and. They may, you know, they may talk, I know, uh, one of the previous meetings we had. Um, I think it was transportation said we carry four percent. And I think then DES John said, yeah, we do as well, I think.
Three to four percent.
Yeah, it was uh when the CDs, or the uh child detention center. It was during that meeting there, so there were a couple of different departments that spoke up and said, yeah, traditionally, historically, we use. Three and a half to four percent, so um, is that, are you saying that um? Are you asking for a higher?
Well, ma- mathematically, it should actually, for planning and future, it should be six percent. So four percent i- i- is the worldwide average. So we look at inflation worldwide as four percent. We have experienced two percent in this country. Um, but actually, the worldwide average is four, so if we were to do planning, we should be using a six percent. Uh, planning factor as opposed to four. So four is the, is the actual experience. Two is one, four is the predicted experience, two is what we've kept it at for a number of years. But actually, the planning factor should be six, uh, between six and eight percent, eight on the high, six. Is is the average, so four percent isn't enough.
Give you a buffer.
Right.
What does the group think about that?
I'm not letting the CIP grow like that.
Yep, no way.
I am not. And and I will cut projects left and right to make that happen.
No, no, I understand your point, Andre, this is Mike Garland, um, you know, I think it's really up to the responsibility of each department as they submit their plan. Uh, working with their consultants, they have one on board, they know their projects, they know their consultants, they know what might be happening. In their particular industry with regard to inflation, and then working with uh Bob Franklin, his team to kind of assess what's happening. Uh, with inflation, so again, we, this is a rolling six-year planning document, so each year we have an opportunity to re- refine and reflect pricing. And I think the encouragement here is that that we look at it and make prudent choices, but like Bob said, if we apply six to eight percent. Each year out, it's going to compound, and we're going to have, it'll just really balloon, now let's hope to God that doesn't happen, let's hope things settle down. But um. I think it's really taking on a year-to-year basis, department by department.
Uh, when we come back to this planning board and the, in the full legislature to increase a project. Or to amend the entire CIP and to add a project. That's. That's hard enough to manage.
Yeah.
If we start inflating the CIP, um. If we start inflating individual projects, the CIP, no choice but to start reducing the number of projects in the CIP.
And that's exactly my. That's exactly my. People expecting MCC to get money for something will suddenly be find it shoved out forever.
But you've got a track record of expectations not being met with this document. Is that a fair statement?
Meaning, my, my view, having sat in the legislature for seven years and changed now. It is much more pronounced in the last two years than it was the first five.
We've had some unprecedented, at least, at least on the OT side. You can take a look at bins we had four years ago. And bins that came in the last two years, and there's been. You know, set of increase like this.
It's a step function.
And it went up. And but but those quite possibly, especially to. Asphalt prices are tied to next price, same thing with steel and and all of that. Those quite possibly could come down, could start coming down in in a couple of years, I've seen it happen over the twenty-five years. That was counting where. One year, there was a steel shortage that increased everything astronomically. But. You know, a year later, two years later, that was not the case.
Markets flooded.
For that Department of Transportation, I agree with Mike Garland, that we, we think it's important every year to kind of reassess as we go through this process. And put a rate on it based on that year, because if we go six percent for this whole six-year program, we're pushing out too many of our projects. Uh, that we're going to be overloading our chips program, our maintenance program, then it starts hitting our operating budget. We really, we think it's important to uh get an accurate, in our department, get an accurate estimate every single year.
Okay.
They're all based on conceptual design costs anyway, when you first put a bid, and then as we get closer to the project and have better handle on cost. Then there's competitive bidding atmospheres too, they change prices regardless of what's going on with inflation. Could have an impact, and we can't take those into account when we get the bids, right?
Get our projects out on the street early in October, that. Burst out of the gate. You get better prices right now. You've, you have seen that happen over the years later. Your contractors already get it. And the bids start creeping up, so that's another way that we try to really. Get the best bang for our buck.
Bed number job, we have no bidders on, surprisingly enough, right, so. It's, you don't know what the bid atmospheres could be like at any particular time.
But it's fair to say it'd be nice to have. The project number. Uh, I think everyone's agreed that they're right, yeah, okay, good, so if that, every department can do that. In the future, that'd be great, that's kind of what we're looking for, right, so, and then escalation, you're gonna have to. Use your.
Nobody's gonna have perfect force.
No, exactly.
But we know right now that there's been a step function increase, just like, I'm sorry, I didn't name. Lady up there is very, very inaccurate, you know, very accurately spoke to and. Nothing I've seen. Says that the stump function's going to reverse itself at any point. Much less within the timeframe of the CIP.
Right. Any other comments? Any comments on the um public comment that we received, any uh comments for that? They're asking about uh the High Valley Trail. Work, they're asking for.
This is all stuff related to the active transportation.
Active transportation, yeah.
So you've read that. Several of them.
To a certain extent, I think it's also a reflection of uh parks' investment across the county. Um, and I can say, I think I said it two weeks ago, the number one topic at every public meeting we had was county parks.
Reproaching forward.
Uh, yeah, not just going forward, if people take pride in them, take value in them. They identify with them as something that the county is responsible for, more so than many other places, or at least positively. And I think that's a reflection of this comment, if someone clearly takes pride in them. Uh, but sees that there's some maintenance that could be done, and they want to see that uh move into some uh to the CIP.
Two of the plans were in the last page for uh parks. The uh, any other comments from board members in this?
On parks?
On the, yeah, on the comment, I think the uh, you may not have. Oh, did he, okay, it was emailed to you, there was a, a public comment on. Um. There were two items, uh, three items, uh, Rob. So.
Oh, the only comments I would have, that we just had a park dedicated in Henrietta, about seventy acres. Um. Uh, probably a couple of weeks ago now, a couple of Fridays ago now, and I guess at some point, we'd probably see something on CIP four. That park being picked up and renovated and. Things added to it. How's that usually come about?
I think Parks Department makes a plan and puts it in the cycle.
Okay.
Understand it, right?
Yeah, so the parks are, I can't speak to their exact operations, but they have a goal of having a master plan for every county park. I would assume the same for this new county park, how quickly that will hit the CIP, I can't speak to what their plans are.
Got you.
So you'll see a couple of plans, Rob, in. On the last sheet, last page of the ranking sheet, you'll have.
Okay.
Master plans there for this church filling Greece and Highland, so forty-six. Fifty, or forty-nine of fifty.
Okay.
So, that's the process I believe that Pat's referring to.
Okay, well, thanks a lot, appreciate you answering that.
That is the only feedback that I I believe we received, yeah.
We know he got a hundred percent of everybody's attention. I can't remember the last, somebody writing a letter.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Join the citizens for the public.
Right.
You know, yeah, that's a lot of money flowing, and somebody's entering, didn't.
Yeah. So with that, um, the comments period will remain open until next Thursday. So, I think that's what was posted, so legally, we gotta leave it up to the twenty-third. So, which case, um, I'll ask for it to be closed, if there's no objections at that, at that next meeting, so. We may receive a couple more.
Hope so.
Um, I had a, I had a question, the um. I was thinking about this yesterday during the uh. Climate action plan, um. I just heard some things that could affect us in the future, um. Uh, you know, the master plan, uh, or the CIP, so I don't know if that's, I assume that's going to be. Heading, uh, you know, some modifications, some projects or whatever, right?
Uh, regarding the first phase of the internal county operations for climate action planning?
Yeah, it seemed like there were all sorts of categories that could affect county, you know, operations, buildings. You name it, it was across the board, I mean, every time you brought up another. It was across the board. I mean, every time you brought up another, somebody brought up another topic, it was, oh, that, that could affect the CIP. Oh, that could affect us, you know, there's so. So has there been some thoughts on that going forward?
Yeah, so with the planning documents, much like this planning document, you know, we're not actually committing to any funding.
Yeah.
Uh, we're providing recommendations, but then when those recommendations go from, you know, planning stage to a more conceptual or actual infrastructure or build stage. Uh, then they would potentially hit the CIP depending on what they, what they are at dollar value, all the details that normally get elevated to the CIP. And I do know that DES has had some conversations regarding phase one and what that might look like for the, the CIP, but I can't speak to anything specifically. I'm just not involved in that.
Yep. Good. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the twenty twenty four through twenty twenty nine capital improvement program, please say goodbye by saying aye. Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. For the vote. Uh, next up is the priority vote. And that was included. I think it was emailed to you with that. And saying that's all from this four page document. Are there any objections to, uh, well, let me, let me take a, um, now let's, let's discuss it first. Is there any, are there any items that people think? Some items should be moved up, some items should be moved down. Any objections to this list? And if not, then I'll move forward with the asking for a motion, but I'd like to discuss a little bit here. We have in the past, you know, had projects where, geez, that looks relatively long for such a main priority. Any comments from anybody? I, I see that, um, the MCC STEM addition is at a decent score, it's sixth on the list. Pure Waters, some of the sews. Some parks, building and structures, two point three.
Everyone's had to, I can just add some other details regarding, so um, average priority rating, for those of you who are new to this. Uh, all the scores, the one to fives are just aggregated and then divided by the total. We had twelve voting members this uh, session. Um, out of fifteen, sometimes we don't always get all of them. Um, and then you'll see there's two or three big uh, or darker lines. We really just divided it into uh, what we would call high priority, medium priority and low priority. Uh, they're roughly one and a half uh, point intervals. Um, but if that's very rough, there's not a lot to, other than kind of just doing that for a little bit of clarity in organization. Um, and then as you'll see, uh, the higher rating ones often involve public safety, uh, some popular projects that have been moved up from previous CIPs. And then some uh, essential services as well, that we all rely on from wastewater and things.
And this is going to be published in the front of the book without the numbers.
Yes.
So it'll just be a list of projects.
Correct, in the order. Unless we modify, of course.
Yeah. Any comments on this list? Everyone happy with it? I thought it was a decent list, some things that, you know, I can live with a lot of it, so. If there's no recommendations to move anything, I'd like to take a motion for the twenty twenty four capital budget year project priority vote as submitted. Thank you, Dave, Mr. Watson.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Weider. Last chance for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. With that, I'd like to thank all the departments. Uh, and everyone that's done a, a very, you know, it's a, it's a lot of work. This uh, it starts in the summer and ends you know, next month after the legislature goes through it and, and it's a big process. Thank you, Pat, and uh, everyone that you've been working with, all, every department head. Thank you, Yushin, Kim, for everything. So, nice job. Next up. Any recommendation, recommend, I'll say motion, sorry, to recommend an amendment to the twenty twenty three through twenty twenty eight CIP and the twenty twenty three capital budget to add a project entitled twenty twenty three traffic signal replacements group one in the town of Greece and city of Rochester in the amount of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Any motion for that, please?
Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And the Tom and Scott are here.
I'm gonna kick it off for us here. Thank you. Um, as Tom alluded to, it's part of the DOT section there. Uh, this is one of those projects that we uh, got received federal money for, federal state money in a recent call, projects from the Tennessee Transportation Council. So what we're asking for at this time is to add this project, the design money to the project, the capital budget. Uh, to get that, those activities started. And we have programmed the construction in the year twenty twenty six in this document that you just moved earlier. So this is a part of the coordination of that. Um, and I can, I would turn to both Tom and Dave here more technical uh, questions to be had, but they were more this is oriented at upgrading some of our uh, if you're familiar with traffic signals around town, some had those span wires across the diagonal intersection and, and we're looking to upgrade those to more the mast arm style. And that's just, that's what this project involves. So for that, any more specific questions than that, I would recommend Tom and Dave answer you.
Questions from board members? I've seen those go up. Well, it's like a UG improvement, you know? And does that help during storms with the lights and the, right?
And yeah. Windstorm we had a few years ago, I think you had signal down all over the place. We had, we lost one head this year over at File Avenue and fast arms earlier. I've already just saw you see in Florida and uh,
Right.
It'll be detection cameras, like we're doing in East River Road too, bigger improvements and uh, all the underground facilities are getting replaced too. A lot of that old steel has been in the ground thirty plus years. It's all rotted out and all the wires moved, uh, a lot of maintenance.
Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All right. Any extensions? Great, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Item seven, uh, I need a motion to recommend an amendment to the twenty twenty three through twenty twenty eight CIP and the twenty twenty three capital budget to add a project entitled ERP system replacement in the amount of nine point five million dollars. And let's see, this Jennifer who's here from Information Services. Online, right?
Yes, I am here.
Hi Jennifer, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, everyone. Um, obviously, I believe everyone in this group is aware that we are replacing our current ERP system called SAP. We are, uh, we have an RFP out, we're currently reviewing vendors um, in an effort to find a, a new ERP system that more suits uh, the county's needs. Obviously, it costs money to do that. And um, we need to also engage in a, in addition to the software that comes in, obviously, we need to pay an organization to implement um, the new software. Uh, it's an extensive project, extensive process. As well as we need to convert the data from our current ERP system to the new system. And that is uh, why we are asking for these, for these particular funds. Again, I don't have a presentation or anything of that nature, but certainly if anybody has any questions, we can um, you know, be happy to answer any of those. And obviously Bob is very, also very familiar with this project as he is the executive sponsor uh, for this new ERP system.
I'll just tag on that it's county wide software. It's accounting and financial management, it's our human resources and human capital management. It's our uh, work order system in asset management. Uh, which includes GIS tracking of the county assets. Um, it's our time and attendance system. Uh, used by virtually all staff to some degree because we all have to submit time, time sheets.
Okay.
But as Jennifer said, the existing software is approximately eighteen years old. Um, it is not a modern system by any definition. Um, and frankly, it's the, the systems there, man, the systems that are developed today. Uh, it's more than just a modern look and feel to it. It's much more user intuitive and user friendly. Um, uh, it's not an exaggeration to say the most county staff are afraid to use SAP, so they don't. How much of the SAP we have been customized? The current system is so heavily customized, I'm not gonna lie. Controllers, office staff and human resources staff back in two thousand four, two thousand five wanted it to look just like the previous system, LGFS. Which was customized to look like the previous system. Um, unfortunately, every time there's been a significant update to SAP. It's a lot of consulting expense to go through because the update usually breaks something. Um, um, Jennifer is a big proponent and I can't agree more going into a new product. Um, we can configure the new product to meet our needs. We are not customizing the new product to then to our needs.
Right. And if I can add on to that, um, the, the newer systems or any system, but hopefully with the newer systems, there should be uh, built in efficiencies with the processes that they have. And I, I, I believe Bob would agree that our intent is to implement as vanilla as possible, obviously, which is to to not customize so that we do not get into this issue again. Um, certainly there can always be some customizations, but um, we can approach this in a more measured fashion. So that uh, we can keep any types of customizations to, to an absolute minimum, which will again keep our costs down going forward in comparison to the chaos, if I, if I may, of what we have currently, which is, as, as Bob already discussed. Um, things break left or right whenever we try to just put upgrades in that SAP, SAP issues regularly.
I have to apologize, I had a motion from Legislature Hebert, but I don't think, okay, Andrew, thank you. Mr. Hollister. Good. Any other?
This is nine point five million, all hitting in twenty three.
That's right. Basically proposals that come in um, look a little different than in two thousand five. And that's, in two thousand five, we actually purchased SAP and we have a server here.
Yeah.
And we have offsite servers. Um, the proposals that come in today are, are called software as a service. We basically license its use. Um, so the licensing cost will not be part of this project. We have to run that through the operating budget. Um, fortunately, the annual operating cost should be a little less than the annual operating cost of SAP. What you have in this, in this, um, is the cost of professional services. Um, which Jennifer mentioned is the staff who work with the software company to meet with us, understand how the software needs to be configured. So they, they program those configurations. Um, and then they help us deploy it um, across the county for its use.
Um, that's county staff. And you're capitalizing their cost.
No, no, we aren't capitalizing costs. It's the professional services of the consultant.
Third party.
Third party, it configures the software. It also includes um, expenses associated with data migration. Uh, from SAP into the new system and archiving those data that will be um, not brought over, but simply archived into an accessible format.
And is there a forecast for capital expenses in twenty twenty four?
There are not.
I mean, the project's not going to be done by thirty first of this year.
Capital projects survive the end of the calendar year, they cross, so they're always multi-year projects. So this is um, intended to be um, a twelve to eighteen month implementation.
But the nine, so I got, so, so it's in it's not going to just happen in twenty three, but the nine point five million is a reasonable estimate for the total cost.
I believe it's a reasonable estimate.
Okay, our, our guess.
Now here, here's what I did. We looked at, we have five proposals. Um, we looked at the professional services cost of each, I picked the high one. It was seven point eight million. I rounded up to eight point five. And then I added a million dollars for data migration. That gets us to nine point five.
And you're still gonna go through interviews?
We are, we are uh, concluded our first interview today. We have two more vendors to look at in the next three weeks.
And you're interviewing uh, or talking to uh, their rec, you know, their uh, clients.
It's basically a demonstration from the software vendor itself. It's discussion from the professional services staff who will help configure and implement. And then we have um, through our contracted advisor, Avro. They are helping us contact references from New York State.
So the uh, the consultants you've hired aren't necessarily joined with the vendors, they're a third party.
They're agnostic. Yep, our, our consultants helped understand what we do and what we need. They helped us draft the RFP. And they are helping set up the process and scripts by which the software companies have to demonstrate their product.
That's like through about a ten years.
It is, it is.
We passed that two years ago.
December of twenty one.
So you first hired a consultant and then you picked the platform?
Didn't pick the platform.
We have not picked the platform.
So the sequence would be first do these interviews. Select the consultant. And then select the platform.
Uh, we selected the consultant to help us draft the RFP. And help us review the proposals and score the proposals that come in. And once we select a vendor to move forward with, Avro, our consultants, will help us project manage the vendor we select.
I got it. So the consultant, professional service company, and then the SaaS provider.
Yes, our consultant will not be doing the configuration of the software. It's the professional services that work with the um, ERP product.
What are other, other, other um, counties that have recently shifted? And if so, what platform do they use?
Uh, it's all over the board. We've concluded. Um, I, I probably okay to say this, I don't know, we, we concluded uh, with a company called Tyler, they manufacture munis. They're uh, throughout New York State and counties and cities and towns. Um, we have um, demonstrations scheduled with Oracle and Workday. Tyler is its own independent company. They provide their own professional services. It's all proprietary. Oracle and Workday, those software companies uh, work with third party um, vendors for the configuration and implementation.
I spent twenty seven years with IBM. Some of them leading teams that did SAP installations, ERP systems and others. And I'm shocked the number is as low as it is because I suspect you're going to see some mods that, just because of the, that's why I asked the customization.
Yeah.
I've never, I, I don't know, dozen of these projects or something where I led it, you know, I was the manager of the team that actually knew what the hell they were doing with the software. And um, they've never, none of them, I, I, almost none of them come in at budget. And more customization you've done in the worst of that.
Yeah.
Only defer it so long. Two thousand and five's a long time.
It's, it's time. Orlando. Laura. Great, great. Uh, so we have a moment and a second. No other discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. No other discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Any extensions? Hearing none, that motion is best, thank you. Any other business?
I just wanted to make a clarification on the priority list. Runway twenty eight safety and uh A T C, the power miles are inverted. A T C is the twenty million dollar project runway.
Right.
Yep. Thank you, Sean.
Nice catch.
They know we can't believe you see point six.
Yeah. Our next good meeting is in a week at the normal time, three thirty. Uh, I understand we have one item. Coming in and we will have to, uh, close the comment period too, so. Um, there's nothing else, any emotion for German?
Come on. Second.
Mr. Franklin, thank you, whoever, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks. Have a good weekend. Thank you, Jess.
Thank you.
See ya.